So I need a motion from the board to move public comment, item 2.4, to be moved to follow this discussion.
I motion to move item 2.4 to now.
Dan Catwin? Do I have a second?
Second.
Megan Genovese, second. Are there any board members who are opposed to that, so I don't have to call the roll? All right, so we are going to move public comment to right now. So I have a statement to read. First of all, the board acknowledges written communication from the following people: the kindergarten team of Beecher Road School, the members of grades 1, 2, and the specialist teams of Beecher Road School, Jean Millau, Amy Meacham, Nicole Chick, the third grade team of Beecher Road School, the fourth grade team of Beecher Road School, Sarab and Padmaja Vialkar, please excuse my pronunciation, Patricia Alonso, Chrissy Anton, Kathleen Joe Corbin, Melissa Federico, Michelle Goglia, Nicole and John Ross, Eri Herman, Monica Kazmarzik, Marie McDaniel, Erin Olesky, Donna Schuster, Sheri Storyguard, James and Kristen Turkos, and Amanda Tima. The board also has received communication from the WEA, including the reopening plan, follow-up survey dated July 2020. All of these communications can be found in the e-meeting of the Cade Portal. So those have been acknowledged. Now I'm going to read the statement about public comment. The board welcomes public participation. We ask that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Please be aware that the board will not respond to any comments made during the public comment period, except to clarify issues, but we will take into consideration your comments and when appropriate, district administration will follow up with you at a later point in time. So, Dan, if you could help me with those people who are raising their hand. The first person I did see in the chat before it became overwhelming to me was that Maria Madonik had a public comment to make. So I'll call on Maria Madonik to start.
Can I mention one thing about chat? Chat's great because we can, you know, people can put, you know, information and also support each other, and that's great. But if people could just refrain from any comments that are disrespectful, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Joyce. Maria, are you on?
Yes, can you hear me, Lynn?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for moderating, and thank you for the board and the administration for bringing together us as a strong group of professionals to provide us some information to help make these decisions. I just wanted to speak to two things this evening. One was cohorting, and the other one was to advocate for a very strong distance learning plan. What I wanted to say about cohorting is I think Dr. Martinello brought up some excellent points regarding students cohorting in groups, but I know I'm not the only parent who has students that will be not just in different grades, but in different schools throughout the district. I will have a student starting high school this year, one in middle school, and two still at Beecher Road School. And even if those students stay diligently within their own cohorts, we're still mixing at home. So let's say, for instance, that, you know, there's an illness or there is an exposure to, you know, the high school student. I would then consider us all, you know, all of our cohorts to be compromised. And as our speakers mentioned this evening, the period where transmission can happen the most is before symptoms even occur. So the responsible thing to be, you know, would be to report that to the other cohorts, and it may be prudent that my children or whomever this happens to quarantines for a time being to protect those other cohorts and protect those other students and teachers and family members in schools. And so that brings me to my point of advocating for a very strong distance learning platform, a platform that would occur concurrently with a brick-and-mortar experience at school as well, that will allow students a seamless transition between quarantining and being able to go back in and out of the physical school itself. It will also help support students that need to or choose to stay at home. And I think Dr. Strampler brought up some excellent points about really leading the way here with a strong distance learning platform that could support us in the future for snow days, for students and families that are chronically ill and need to manage their education at home. I think it's an excellent opportunity. So I definitely wanted to speak to those two points and remind the board that those situations are occurring in our community, and also to speak to the various comments about outside classrooms, especially to Megan's comments. From the PTO, we did approve several grants from teachers and teacher groups that had to do with shading equipment and seating equipment for outdoor classrooms, and we expanded the amount of money that we were going to give for these grants by thousands to support those outdoor seating in the outdoor classrooms. So we just want to mention that
Thirty seconds.
We'll be interested, it would be very nice to have a safety protocol for the students being outside, and we also wanted to know that we were there to support that as best that we can. Thank you.
Maria, thank you very much. Could you just state your address, so that's part of the record?
Certainly. It's 531 Amity Road.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I have Nicole Chick. If you could say your name and your address, we appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Nicole Chick. I live at 38 Deer Run Road. I have twins at Beecher who are entering year four of the MAG program, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Beecher Road School. First, I would like to say thank you for providing an opportunity for public comment last Wednesday and this evening. It's evident that we have strong feelings and opinions about reopening school in a few short weeks, and it is important to be heard. The kindergarten team wrote a follow-up letter for this meeting, providing more insight to what in-person learning would look like in the fall. I will touch upon that briefly tonight, so I encourage you and all parents to read our letter and the other teacher submissions. It will also voice concerns I have about reopening schools from a parent perspective. The kindergarten team at Beecher has always worked tirelessly to provide a warm and welcoming environment for our students as they enter public school for the first time. Academics are rigorous, but we also know children learn best through play, which we have fought hard to keep in our curriculum and daily schedule. So much of the play and social interaction will be gone with the CDC guidelines. We go into great detail in our team letter, but one aspect of the recommendations I want to highlight is that we would become the frontline providers of these guidelines. Therefore, it is our responsibility to remind and redirect four- and five-year-olds to not play with their masks and to keep distance from other children, when all their instincts are telling them is to get closer to each other in order to make connections to their peers. I will be discouraging all the things that I would normally be encouraging. This is not only heartbreaking to myself as an educator, it is also very, it will also be very confusing and stressful for the children. They are already in a new environment without their caregivers for the first time, which is overwhelming enough. Now they're being told not to get close to the little people they really want to be friends with. I worry about the mental toll this will take on them. I also cannot comfort them when they become distressed. Two will be in a constant state of anxiety, trying to enforce all the necessary guidelines, knowing a child in the group could be asymptomatic. How am I to perform my job well if I am constantly worrying about getting sick and potentially bringing the virus home to my own family? As a reminder, in the classroom, there will be no hugging, no stories on the carpet, no lunchtime chats, no playing, no partner work, no small groups, no conferring, no high-fives, no hand-holding, no sharing supplies, sharing anything. School will not be a place of normal socialization or normal routine. Nothing is normal. We are living during a global pandemic. As a parent of slightly older children who have more self-control, I'm still very concerned about them being in our building. Our pediatrician, Dr. Gregory Germaine, is Associate Chief of Pediatrics at Yale Children's Hospital. He is also the medical advisor to the Amity School District. He announced last week that Yale Children's Hospital did a study of about 2,000 pediatric patients that came into the hospital. Some were ill in the emergency room, and others were coming in for pre-op testing before procedures and operations. They found a 2.3 COVID positive rate in these patients, so one in 15 children is positive for COVID. This is double the infection rate of the state right now. Translating these numbers for Beecher's population would mean there would be two students per 100 having COVID, or about 16 students. 16 students in the building could have this virus at any given moment. They could be riding buses, entering our building, and going to extend a day, all the while spreading the disease back to their homes and to their homes of teachers. This is bigger than just the Beecher community. This could cause the spread of infection across many towns and disrupt the general public health in many communities. Am I getting cut off?
We have three minutes. That's for everybody.
There's not, there's not, there's not much.
Thank you.
How quickly will these numbers rise when students are in school and you're helping more children and adults? This is very unsettling to me as a teacher and parent. There is so much, we still need, we still not know about this virus with new information coming out daily. Instead of taking a risk of opening to help with children's socialization, it makes sense to me as a parent and as a teacher to start the year in distance learning plan. As others have mentioned, there is not a one-size-fits-five model. There are no easy answers. What I do know is for teachers to do their jobs in the safest way possible for our health, the health of our students, and the health of our community, distance learning is the absolute best option. If we start planning now, everyone, teachers, students, and parents will feel more prepared and ready to begin the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. I just would like to remind everyone to make sure that you're muted unless you're speaking, both on the phone and on the computer. Amy Meacham wishes to speak.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amy Meacham. I live at 43 Indian Trail. I have two daughters who attend Beecher, and I also teach third grade at Beecher. And as Nicole just mentioned, there are a bunch new teacher letters that were posted tonight, and I really actually think, I would just like to ask everyone, there's a huge number of people here tonight, please take the time to read all of the letters from parents and teachers. There's a lot of really important information in there. I in particular want to amplify the letters from the teachers, both this week's letters and also you have to go back to last week's letters. As many of you know, most Beecher teachers are not permitted to speak at these meetings because they are not Woodbridge residents, so I would really like you to read their words and hear from them about their concerns about their safety and their family's safety, and also about what schooling would look like if we had to go back to full in-person. And there are also some new letters today that were posted from teachers talking about already brainstorming ideas for how to make a more robust distance learning plan. So I would really hope and ask for you to all look at those if you haven't already. There are a million things I could do, talk about tonight, but I know Dan will cut me off, so here's what I want to talk about. I watched the governor's press conference last Thursday. I didn't have a chance to watch today because I was making dinner for my kids, but the press conference was really meant to reassure teachers that the governor had our backs. But when his guest speaker, Dr. Scott Gottlieb, started talking, his words were not at all reassuring to me as a teacher. And so you can read today's third grade letter for the quotes from Dr. Gottlieb and our comments about that. But the thing that I thought was most interesting is that in that press conference, Dr. Gottlieb said many times, and the governor also said it at least once, that it is highly likely that the state will be going back to full distance learning this year. He said, I can't remember the exact quote, he said something like, oh, it could be two months, it could be one month. Obviously, he doesn't know exactly what it is. But the governor sort of echoed that same thing, saying, yeah, we're probably going to have to do distance learning, so let's squeeze a month or two when we're in school. And so I guess my main question is, why are we risking lives and wasting time and energy and maybe district money into this plan that the governor and his expert already agree isn't going to work? And the other thing I want to say, thank you, Dan, is I don't like this idea of a wait and see, and then we'll call it off and go back to distance learning. I don't want to be a guinea pig in that experiment. I know that we were looking at data and numbers. I am not a number, I am a person. My children are people, my students are people. So I really think when we talk about data, please know that for some of us, we are not numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Jean Millau, I know you were there. Are you still here and on?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm here, Lynn. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay.
Great. You can just identify yourself, we'll be all set.
I will. My name is Jean Millau. I live at 60 Dillon Road in Woodbridge. My two children are Beecher and Amity graduates, and I have been a math specialist at Beecher for 15 years. Beecher teachers are dedicated, hardworking, creative, and loving people. We want to be teaching students in our classrooms. However, at the present moment, during this COVID-19 pandemic, many of us feel that returning to our school building will be unsafe. Some members of the public do not seem to fully understand this perspective. So imagine, if you will, that you work in an office building with about 900 people. Most of these people work in groups of about 20, in spaces about the size of a very large conference room. Most of your colleagues remember to stay in their designated seats, which are supposed to be six feet apart, but sometimes they get up and move about the room, or they may move their chairs closer to you so that they can hear you better, or so that they can show you their work. Most of the people in your working group try to remember that they must keep their masks on all day, but some forget. Some remove their masks to rub their noses and then forget to put them back on. Others remove their masks to drink from their water bottle and then forget to put their mask back on. Some of the younger office workers refuse to wear a mask at all. The bottom line is this, and it's a question you will all need to answer before you make the decision to send teachers back into the classroom. In your office, would you be comfortable working in that conference room with 20 other people for over six hours a day, five days a week? If not, how can you expect teachers to do the same? Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Dr. Sheri Storyguard wanted to speak.
Good evening, board. My name is Sheri Storyguard. I live at 27 Deepwood Road. I spoke last week about my ideas regarding outdoor learning. I am a parent of children at your school, pediatrician in the community, and I have been involved in nonstop conversations with people who have been problem-solving safety and logistics for schools, camps, and medical practices for the past months, places that have stayed successfully opened in creative ways and are planning for the fall. I am speaking more today as a problem solver informed by medical practice. It is clear that public health officials informing government mandates will determine to what degree our children have in-school learning or have homeschooling. Many are waiting and advocating for the call to be made that the next year will be one for homeschooling. That may happen. Given that we have a mandate and that there may be an opportunity to have at least some in-school learning happen, we should be thinking creatively about how to do this in a way that maximizes safety and minimizes risk. To the extent that any in-school learning is able to happen in six weeks, two months, three months, or six months, safely based on COVID numbers in our state, I aim to mobilize a will for outside learning at school. I believe that it is the safest way for teachers and students to have the lowest risk of COVID transmission at school while fulfilling our goals to have our children engaged meaningfully in their education. We know that outdoor, open air is the safest place for thoughtfully planned, small groups to happen during this pandemic. Again, thoughtfully planned, small groups, outdoors, in open air. This can be possible at our school, where I am told every classroom has a door leading to the outside, and there are large fields, shaded areas, and open paved areas. Every class could have a sturdy pavilion close to its classroom door. I have researched costs. Tables, benches, and fans, yoga mats, and lap desks could be donated by parents from their homes. Many types of instruction or teaching could happen in and around these pavilions. In choosing to be appropriately conservative, masks should be worn while together outside under the pavilion and could be taken off when children are spread more apart away from the pavilion. I suggest that children walk directly to these outdoor classrooms wearing masks upon getting dropped off at school and be dismissed from their outdoor gathering spots, minimizing travel through hallways and crowded entryways. If in-school classes were smaller, all could be done more safely: troubleshooting weather hardships, teachers getting their bearings with everything that is new, and decisions about illness. Whether these small groups happen via the hybrid model, or via families who opt out, or via creative grouping outside with more staff
It's over.
Can I please finish? Will be the question for your board or committee who gather information about staff and student numbers. Asking parents about opting out of busing and applying these same guidelines to the extended-bait program could make this goal attainable. Again, I will state this vision: Should COVID numbers in our community stay low and in-school learning be mandated to happen, thoughtfully planned, small groups, co-horted, outdoors, in open air, wearing masks when closer together? You need the community to help achieve this goal. There is a finite amount of energy, bandwidth, and time for every group and individual. The ex- Do you guys want me to stop?
Do you have a lot more?
No.
Finish up.
There is a finite amount of energy, bandwidth, and time for every group and individual. The extensive moving parts and layers of this problem will quickly hinder progress if we don't call on more people locally now to help, and if we don't have a plan that is inherently flexible. If a subcommittee for outdoor learning can be made, I offer to lead other parents and engage teachers to problem-solve this part, and will reach out to builders, architects, engineers, and logistics experts. Parts of our community Maybe not the ones bashing me on chat right now. Parts of our community Hunger to be an active part of our local solution. I have been getting many emails from parents since I spoke last week in support of this vision. Picture this: Teams of teachers coming together to figure out how to craft their plans for different types of learning, sitting together in wide circles outside. Within view of them, organized parents wearing masks, putting together pavilions for their child's classroom outside, and washing tables that they've unloaded from their vans and trucks. Imagine how good it could feel for parents to put their sweat into building outdoor spaces for this school. Imagine how good it could feel for teachers to see them doing this. Imagine how good it could feel for our children to see this teamwork. Imagine how good it could feel for the community to be helping with their hands, for a plan that simultaneously makes sense for education and health. I promise I'm finishing. We all agree that the safety of our teachers, staff, students, and their families is of primary importance. We know the virus is transmissible by all and that there are concrete measures that we can take to lower risk. We know that education is at its best when students are with their teachers and peers. We also know that there are many families who do not have the capacity to homeschool their children indefinitely without facing job loss and significant dysfunction. School cannot happen safely at full capacity inside. We are all certain of that. I am concerned that if we aren't creative now, in lowering risk at school and in thinking broadly about risk, school will be unable to happen for well over a year.
Mr. Storyguard?
I believe that by embracing the outdoors as the primary location for convening and learning, while also focusing on mask-wearing and small group cohorting, we can move closer to our goals for safety, education, and wellness. If asked, I will help. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Storyguard. I have Kathy Zadrowski, who has asked to speak.
Hi, this is Kathy Zadrowski. I'm the WEA president for the teachers' union. I would just like to ask for clarification that the WEA survey will be presented tonight and when that will be. We sent it in to Mrs. Sherman, who can present it, if the board is okay with that.
I did request it at the last board meeting. I thought that there were other board members that supported that.
So that was put in e-meeting for the last meeting as part of public comment, Kathy?
So that was the la- That was the survey for that meeting, but there's still the survey that we have for this meeting.
That survey is also uploaded in public comment for this meeting as well.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Marcia?
Yes, that survey she's referring to is also available in e-meeting of the public comment, the one that got sent in today.
Okay.
Yes, we'd just like the public comment, take the time during the public comment to go through that real quickly.
What's-
I would be interested in hearing anything that the teachers have to say.
So Joyce, you would like to see, to see it tonight? Where are you, Joyce? I lost you. Yes? Okay.
I would as well.
Mike, you'd like to see it?
Yes, agreed.
Megan? Jeff Townsend?
I already reviewed it, so it's not important to me, but I'm happy for others to see it.
David Ross?
Same as Jeff. I already read it carefully, but defer to the group.
Right. Dan? Do you want to-
I did review it as well, so if, I don't see if there's necessarily need to present it. It's available to everybody.
All right. Jeff Hughes?
Yeah, I also remuted. Would we present it as an agenda item or added to the public comment?
It would be added to public comment right now.
Okay, I just think we, to ask for the fairness of everyone to have a chance to speak, we should acknowledge the three-minute rule. I think that's important.
Right. So Kathy, do you think, I actually have three board members who would like to see it, but do you want to just give an overview during public comment for three minutes?
Sure. Annalisa, if you could present that, that would be great.
And then, Dan, would you just wait until Kathy starts speaking before you start timing? Thank you.
I'll restart the timer.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Actually, Kim is the one that's going to be presenting it, since she's the one that compiled all the information for us.
Okay, so I'm here and ready to go ahead if you'd like.
Could you just identify yourself, please?
Yep, Kim Franklin. I reside at 155 Remen. I'm also a sixth-grade teacher and representing just the information here on behalf of the WEA. So this was data that was a direct result of questions that came from the Board of that meeting that we had of July 15, and teachers requesting that we resurvey them based on information that was gleaned at that meeting. So 82% of the teachers did respond to the data, and so we think it's pretty reliable in terms of the information that is going to be shared. So on the first slide there, we just basically heard parents share concerns, and in terms of in-person teaching, that we had 83% of teachers basically indicated that they did not want to return to in-person teaching. The teachers' narratives and feedback, which are shared and incorporated in the last page or towards the end of this presentation, basically shares what those concerns are. Many teachers share real concerns about their own health, about their students' health, about their family's health, about being able to adequately keep students safe. The second slide speaks to basically that 95% of the teachers that did respond responded in favor of distance remote teaching, and not because they think it's the ideal format or the optimal format for teaching, but because they think it makes the most sense for, given the situation of COVID-19. I'm actually going to skip to- I'm actually going to skip to the next-- If you can skip that slide and then move on to the next one, for time purposes. The questions that surfaced was, you know, what about this hybrid model? And so we kind of-- We measured it against in-person teaching versus hybrid model. So if teachers were presented with the option of in-person or the hybrid model, there's far less opposition to the hybrid model, but a majority of teachers are still concerned about their health and about the students' health as well, and being able to manage kind of the necessary health protocols, regardless of the format of teaching, whether it's in-person or hybrid. And I want to just return to the definition in the next slide that was presented at the July 15 meeting. We heard about Model 1 for hybrid, which is this A/B day model, which is the alternating days, and Model 2, which is the A/B week model. And then Model 3 was presented from that meeting on July 15, from a board member. And in that model, they talked about where dedicated-- Teachers would be dedicated to in-school, and teachers would be dedicated to remote teaching. And the next slide gives you that picture of the feedback that was provided from teachers, and basically if the school elected to go this hybrid model, is they were in favor of Model 3, basically allowing for teachers to be dedicated to in-school or dedicated to remote teaching. However, this does not mean that they're more favorable to hybrid teaching or being in-school, as the first slide presents. They're not favorable to returning to in-person teaching. But I think what it does show you that they like it because it gives them this concept of choice, as it would give other colleagues this choice. But what we don't know in all of this is if teachers really have choice to return, whereas families do. And so-- I understand, but Dr. Storyguard did get a little extra time. So if I could, I think this is important data to just to convey, we are making decisions about students, but we're also making decisions that impact teachers. So I would just like just a few more minutes to share that information.
I think that's fair, Kim. Go ahead.
If you can just go on to the next slide, where-- Yep, and just-- There were questions regarding virtual learning, because wanting kind of this concept of obviously more robust teaching. And so I want to speak to that. The teachers-- We heard the parents' concerns about distance learning needing to be more robust, and teachers would also agree. We are all new to this, and distance learning has limitations. We're very much aware of it. But teachers were given minimal training, and everyone, including the administration, did their very best that they were, you know, given the circumstance. But 93% of the teachers agreed that they would incorporate some kind of virtual learning in terms of distance learning. And so the next-- We can skip over the next slide after that, as well as the following slide. That can be for others to review on their own. But in terms of making distance learning more robust, if given the time and professional development, 93% of the teachers felt that they could basically work to implement a more rigorous and more robust experience that's more interactive for the students. However, time and professional development is key to ensuring that teachers have the tools they need to ensure that this happens, and this is communicated by teachers in their narrative feedback, which is on the next slide. You can see it says, "Strategies to Make Distance Learning More Robust." There are several, several themes. I'm not reading over this, but I think one very consistent, constant theme that was conveyed in the teacher feedback was this time for planning, collaboration, and teacher training. We didn't have that in this spring. And there's also this, you know, you ask outside-the-box thinking. In the spring, we asked-- Teachers asked, "How can we have TAs involved?" TAs asked, "How can we be involved in help and support?" We also would implore that all teachers-- That we have a very strong pool of teachers that pull from resources, expertise, and we really relied on the shoulders of classroom teachers to be the ones who convey the lessons in terms of that distance learning format, even though other teachers were putting energy and time into planning. And then the complete kind of feedback that you'll see is 80, 80-some-oddam--
It's over.
--item list that teachers really communicated, and that link is at the bottom there for people to review. There's also concern regarding in-person teaching, and there's significant concern. And it's a six-page-long document where teachers are sharing that concern, and most of it revolves around systems, logistics, and safety concerns. How do we maintain physical distance, reducing the number of students? How do we do that? Also, logistics around flexible working outside. They're not opposing it. It's not resistance. It's concern around safety. And so that communication is conveyed on that link that's shared at the bottom as well. The last slide talks about professional development. So when asked what teachers needed in terms of professional development, basically, they provided many ideas. But training regarding COVID-19 protocol came in at top. So should we reopen the school at any capacity, whether it's hybrid or in-person? Teachers really felt it was a high priority to understand the protocols and systems. Then, many teachers responded that they needed more training on the technology platforms that the school utilizes. Much of what was done in the spring was done in an emergency. And we would like to be more thoughtful with our return plan. So we need time, and we need professional development, and we need the assistance of everybody that's in that building. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that. Jeff Luck?
Thank you very much.
Just identify yourself.
Jeffrey Luck, 54 Country Club Drive in Woodbridge. And I think we keep all talking about what we want to do, what the teachers want to do, but I actually have my daughter who is really interested in what's going on and wanted to speak, and just let her feelings known of what's going on. Madison is entering fourth grade. She had both Ms. Meacham and Ms. Chick--
And Mrs. Sparrow.
And Mrs. Sparrow. So she would like to just say what she feels right now, what's going on, because she is well aware of everything that's going on, because she is affected, and one of the kids that are affected and wants to go to school. Go ahead.
I really miss you guys, and I'm really looking-- And I don't care if I wear a mask, I really want to go to school.
So I think you heard her. She-- And I am not poaching her on this. She wants to wear a mask. She wants to go to school. She understands the risk and has been doing everything she can to be safe, so she can be in school with her friends and her teachers. What are you doing now for-- Kill them activities right now? What are you doing?
Camp.
And she is in camp with a lot of other kids, and they do get together, and they are close. So there's got to be a way of getting these kids together, working together with the school, with the teachers, finding a way-- All the statistics, all the numbers, all the doctors are all going to have different opinions. I think the one thing we can all agree on, which I did send a letter, which hopefully will be added, is that we need to find a way to make this work. And it's not a left-or-right issue. It's a casey issue, and there's got to be a way to get these kids back in school. And is there anything else you want to say? No? I thank you very much, and I appreciate everyone's time and effort in making this thing happen.
Thank you both. Dan, is there anyone else who you see who has their hand raised?
I do not see anybody else. If anybody else wants to speak, please--
Identify yourself.
No one is saying it.
Okay, great. Thank you all.
I have a question. The report that was shared by Kim looks different than the one I have. Seemed like there were some additional slides in that presentation. Can we make sure that we get that version of the presentation as well?
The new one's up on Cave. I noticed the same thing.
Was it just uploaded there?
It was just uploaded. You'll see what the percent responses is from 86 to 82 in the new version online.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thanks, Mike, for that. Okay, we're going to move on. We're up to 2.2. Election of Chair.
Sorry, can I go-- Is it possible to ask more questions, or is that it for the reopening?
If you have a question, Joyce, you can ask.
Oh, okay. Well, it just seems as though there are two things that we need to explore further. One is developing-- How are we going to develop a more robust distance learning model? We talk about raising the bar, but what is actually happening, and what's the best mechanism to make sure that we are going to do this? Because it seems like we're headed in the direction of having a large part of our population doing distance learning. And the second question I have is, there seems to be a lot of interest in this outdoor model. So should we decide that we do have to open school for the families that need to be in school? There are a lot of different reasons. Could we-- Can we seriously explore this outdoor model, and what is the best mechanism for doing that?
Can I just--
Yeah. I was just asking you.
So in just regards of a robust, strong, distance-learning program, and making any improvements that everybody expects and wants to make, I would-- I just would point to a few things. One is that we have a lot of survey data from when we did the survey of parents back in June. We did parent focus groups on this particular item, as well as a focus group with teachers and teacher assistants. We also have, I think, some rich information from the perspective of the most recent thoughts of the WEA. We actually have scheduled time this week to begin moving forward in a much more dedicated and a much more focused manner in order to work on this. We have times already set aside with teachers invited to assist in this. It won't be done in one day, that's for sure. But it's at the top-- There's a few things that are at the top of our list. One of them is that. One of them is developing the protocols necessary that we know we need to have for those who do come into the building. So those things are-- Those things are priority. In regards to the-- In regards to the outside learning, I just want to say that I think there's some tremendous, exciting, creative ideas and thoughts about this. I myself am someone who, and for many years, also participated with my former district in the Nature's Classroom program, which is an outside-learning kind of a mode, which doesn't have kids outside all day, by the way. It's part of the day, and it depends on the time of the year when you go to Nature's Classroom. But nevertheless, I think there-- I think we are, as an administration and as a team, trying to balance the fact that we have only so many weeks to the beginning of the year, that we want to try to emphasize, wherever possible, whenever possible, that the outside-- The use of the outside, or especially the times of the year that are most conducive. Last week, we heard about parents who-- That the outside would introduce yet another variable to kids who are in the building, should they go in or out, based upon the issues and the medical concerns or things like that. Outside learning, if we were just to take it carte blanche, you know, from a perspective of science and looking at through the science inquiry and that kind of a lens, which it would be a massive curriculum change. We also need to honestly have the partnership of our teachers, who are not used to teaching everything outside all day long. But again, I want to go back to the balance. I'd like to-- I'd like to be able to tap into the resources of our parents for some outside tents and equipment, and it will be there as teachers can use them and as we're able to fit that in, whether it's PE, whether it's music and art, whether it's going out for any classroom during the good weather as we get started. It's an area that we need to have, though, lots of dialogue and partnership, because it's a different aspect or different concept of what teachers do right now in many aspects. So I see it as a balance, kind of. Let me stop there.
Yeah. How do we make sure that we allow and embrace the dialogue that, you know, that is-- That we want to see in our community? We have heard from parents who are more than willing to pitch in, provide expertise, help make it happen. And so I'm wondering, is it worthwhile having a committee to really look into this? Because there are-- There are going to be concerns, but are they intermanable? I think probably not. We just need for people to think through each of the issues and think very differently about how we're going to do it. And you bring up a good question. Would the teachers be interested? I mean, I have heard through the years that we've been at Beecher, teachers lament the fact that they don't have the time to be creative, that they have to teach the curriculum as it is. And so this would be a wonderful opportunity to really be creative, to think outside the box and do something different, because we're faced with a pandemic, so we have to anyway. So it's just a thought. You know, the outdoors could be, you know, a giant science lab, as you said, or a giant gymnasium, or a giant art studio, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, we would have to think differently, but I wonder if we asked the teachers, "Are any of you interested? Do you feel safe enough outdoors, number one, and number two? Would you embrace the idea of trying this experiment?"
This is all part of our ongoing work, Joyce. Good points, and it's something-- We have a reopening committee, so we're trying not to create different committees or additional committees. We have a reopening committee that actually weighed this whole conversation last Thursday morning after we heard the board meeting. And so there was, I think, some conversation back and forth about that, and a reality that balance is where we are. And so we're working with the teachers' union. We'll continue to talk to them. We're going to have some meetings this week as we move on our distance learning plan. And I will be speaking to parents this week. I'm going to have an opening webinar with parents, where we'll be able to bring up this aspect in terms of if they can partner or if they can provide tents that were mentioned, things like that. We also have to make sure that we have space for actually having recess-- Open recess where kids can move around, as well as the tents where you wouldn't be actually having recess in those sections. We need to have the free space and the fixed space. So I can't make-- I'm not going to try to sit here and make promises. The promise I can make is that we brought it up. It's on our list. I've charged our facilities manager to actually check into tents, and we want to try to bring the balance and have the partnership of the teachers in planning what we might do with outdoor spaces and to meet the needs, as we're describing.
Yeah, I just see that we have within our community this energy and willingness to pitch in and problem-solve together, so I would love to be able to tap into that. You know, I'd leave that thought out there. And then with distance learning, I wonder if it makes sense to have an update very soon, because we're running out of weeks, so that we understand what are we looking at in terms of distance learning? Because for parents to make that choice, they will need to know what does distance learning actually look like, and what are the enhancements going to be, so on and so forth. So does it make sense to have an update fairly soon? Like, if we wait another month, I think we'll run out of time. But this way, we'll be able to get some input, and then that will inform the decision-making as we go along.
We can do that at the next board meeting. We can certainly help to-- Help people understand where we are in that process and what that looks and how it looks differently. Yes.
Yeah, I just worry that the next board meeting is not until a month, and so by that time, school will open in a week or two. So I don't know. The timing just seems a little tricky. But what do others think on the board?
Well, I agree completely, Joyce. Bob, you've been talking a lot about this planning, but what are the concrete steps that have been taken so far to-- We've talked some about mitigating safety concerns within the building, some. I haven't heard as much about how we're going to enhance the curriculum, teaching and learning that's going to take place. We've heard from the teachers that they don't believe that conventional teaching and learning can take place in the context of safety. We heard Ms. Chick describing that. Similarly, with distance learning, what are the concrete steps that have been taken to enhance what is guaranteed to be a core part of teaching this year? Who are the people that are going to be doing distance teaching? Which elements of the curriculum do you think are most amenable to it? What approaches are we going to be using? How are we going to stratify? I mean, there's 100 questions. I haven't heard personally any details for how we're addressing those.
Well, I think I already talked about the fact that we have gathered-- We've gathered focus group information from people. We have a scheduled meeting this week. I mentioned-- I think I mentioned that already. I think we talked about the fact that we are working-- We have to partner with teachers in order to do that. We just talked a little bit-- There was an idea brought up about bringing to the board, you know, some concrete understanding of what distance learning model looks like differently than we experienced in the spring. I think we need to have a board meeting prior to the third Monday of August, because we have other business, like calendar and other things, so it can be brought up at that time. You know, I mean, enhancing the curriculum-- I'm going to be very honest. We're trying to-- We're trying to make the metrics of this whole thing work. We're trying to make sure-- We don't know exactly how many staff members we have to do both, whether it's going to be in the building or at home. We do not have the answers to that. I don't have all the answers for that right now. This is a process. This is unpeeling the onion, layer by layer, and it's extremely complex. And it's, and it's extremely complex. So I'm not sure what to say, except we're working at it day by day. And if we can, if we continue to throw other variables in, we're going to be in trouble that we can't get to the finish line. And that's why I talked about the whole outdoor learning thing as being something in balance and making sure that we can use it as an option, that we can maybe have, 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 yes, we can have tents, but we can't necessarily change the entire curriculum by August 26th. That's not going to happen in order to do something completely different. We need the partnership of teachers. We have, we are definitely slated to work with our WEA, our teachers' union, because in situations like this, we need to have memorandums of understanding. And when you change the expectations for teachers, whether it's at home or whether it's here at school, there's a lot of layers here that we're working at.
We started, it made sense to see the idea how distance learning is going to happen. And we said, okay, we're, this is an emergency. We're going to figure it out as we go. We had three months of distance learning. And surely within that, we had some extraordinary success and we had some areas that didn't work as well. So I'd like to understand how we're learning from the experience we had, how we're responding to it, how we're building on the strengths and how we're mitigating the areas that fell short. I think it's reasonable at this point to expect concrete details for that plan.
That's what we're working on. We are working on the concrete details.
We're not hearing any of them here.
I think we are definitely going to have to have another board meeting. I think that the plan needs to be sent to the state and then the details need to be worked out. I think that's kind of.
I'd like to make one comment. You know, in response to what Joyce and Mike said, I totally agree. We need a robust distance learning. Personally, I'd love my kid not to go back to the school. I would love her to be home with me. And I'm blessed that my wife and I work from home and, you know, that we can make that happen. That's not a reality for a lot of other people. And in all honesty to my chagrin, my daughter does not want to be here with me. She wants to go back to the school with her friends, you know? And I grew up in upstate New York and I understand, like I played on nine acres of land every day of my childhood. So I understand wanting to be outside. But the reality is, we can't do that safely. Okay? It's just, it's a huge soft target. And I think that we need to look at the science of why the outside is better. And the science behind why the outside is better is because the virus count is lower, the dust particulate is lower, which makes people's immune systems work better. There's ultraviolet light out there that's inactivating the viruses. And we can accomplish all of those things inside the security of our building. So I think that we need to look at what we can do inside of our building with the limited amount of people that want to go back versus focusing in on something that makes us feel nice, which is being outside, but may not be achievable. Where something achievable is being inside with a smaller group of people that need or want to be there.
Why do you think that's not achievable?
Because we're going to end up with a travesty that we've seen at so many other schools. You know, if you have a large cohort of kids outside continuously, it is a huge soft target for people who have ill will in their heart. And, you know, if you want me to say it, we're going to end up with a shooting if we choose to do that. And it's, it's not what we want. It's the reality of it. You know, I mean, that, that's the reality of it. I want to be outside too.
I understand that fear, Dan, but where's the, where is your, where are you getting that from, that you're like so convinced that that's definitely going to happen? You know, I guess I just feel like we, we could spend more time thinking about this. This is a viable option to be outside more often. Our kids are outside every day. It's not like they're not, Mag has an outside classroom. My kid spent half the time there as long as he could, you know?
Not the entire school, right?
It doesn't have to be the whole day. I mean, there is the option of doing a hybrid learning of kids in school where they're outside sometimes and inside sometimes. So not all kids would be outside at the same time. And so there's other, there's options. I just don't think we should be throwing anything out the window and saying we can't possibly do it.
I'm not saying throwing everything out the window, but I'm saying that we need to look at what's realistic and achievable in the time that we have. And what we have that's realistic is bringing the outside in for a smaller section of people. And I, look, we need to do more research to see what the actual risk is. Okay? So let's figure out what the actual risk is. But for the last 10 years of our life since Sandy Hook, all we've heard about is hardening our schools, right? There's a reason, I hated the Sally Port when it went up. But I was told that the Sally Port was a necessity because of school shootings, right? So I actually went and complained to Dr. Stella the day it went up. And I said, I don't like this. It makes me feel like I'm alienated from my school. So either we were wrong then or we're wrong now. Okay? But you can't say we were right then and we're right now. It's impossible.
Well, life is different now. So there's different things that we're weighing. There's different real possibilities of being infected. You know?
It seems like it changed when it was convenient to change versus when the situation changed. I don't think that the society we live in is any less safe or more safe than it was when the Sally Port went up.
I think the difference is 150,000 people have died in the country in the past four months from a deadly virus.
That has nothing to do with child safety. Are you saying that the 100?
It has everything to do with what we're talking about of having kids in a school. That's what this conversation is about, is that the virus is transmitted when people are inside. The kids are carrying it. They're spreading it to the adults. That's what we're talking about.
That's a hypothesis. That's not fact. That's what one modeler said they spread. All kinds of variables that go into models.
Okay. I think that there's a lot of considerations that are going to have to be made. I think the process that Bob suggested is that there will be focus groups. There'll be opportunities for people to talk. And some discussion with teachers and WEA about the planning and how that's going to work.
Yeah, I guess there's real concern, probably you can take that away, Lynn, about both the in-person model as well as the distance learning model where there's a feeling that we should be doing more, you know, with the distance learning. And we should probably have something that people can react to fairly soon because we're running out of time. And we do want input from the community. We're a community that is, that's very engaged and responsive. And that's what's wonderful about our community. So we should really embrace that. And then with the in-person model, it just seems like the safest way is the outdoor approach. And are there issues? Absolutely. But let's, let's try to work through this. And we can't even begin to try to do that if we don't say, okay, this is what we're going to do. We're going to form a committee. We're going to, whatever it is, whatever that mechanism is. But to say, oh, we're going to have focus groups. I don't know. It just doesn't feel action oriented enough. I'm just worried that we're not going to make enough progress with concrete steps.
Let me, let me.
Go ahead, Bob.
Let me just say that we've, we've had the focus groups. We have focus group information. We have recent information from our WEA. The meetings this week are communication meetings, making sure that staff understand the plan and they have an opportunity to indicate how they can be helpful as we move forward. As well as the meeting for parents that I will schedule will also be an opportunity for us to make sure parents understand the plan as we're moving forward and what our next steps are. So, so we're not, we're not going to gather, we have a lot of information about how to make distance learning better. Some of those have already gotten started. We have a meeting scheduled this week to do that. We will come back in the beginning of August in order to bring back to the board and the greater public to understand what does this look like? How is, you know, so people have an understanding and better feel for what they might be signing up for, so to speak, if that's what they're looking at. We will do that. And that's, that's our goal. We're, we're now into the, we, look, we were in a compliance situation. We have a hard deadline to have a plan that the state requires and expects of us. It's helped us to also develop more thinking around the specifics. Some of the specifics are in the plan. We are now planning the actual, more the details in terms of getting into the distance learning, what that model exactly will look like. We'll communicate it in August. We have to create protocols and procedures also at this time, getting our staff involved with our administration for the onsite in-person learning. So it, we're hitting the ground right now in terms of, we've gotten past the compliance, the big picture, the overview, the state's requiring. Into that right now, we have, really, we have four or five weeks. We're going to, we're going to be taking the most balanced approach that we possibly can here to make sure we can do the best we can for all the kids in whichever option there might be. And in the second week of August, we're going to find out if the state has any changes in what they're expecting to actually tell school districts to do. Are they going to continue on this same road? Are they going to say no go to hybrid or no go to complete distance learning?
I guess we just want to make sure that, I don't know if we really are waiting to hear from the state to kind of change course. I think.
No, we're not waiting. No, 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 we're not. We are working on the distance learning plan. We have to learn on, we're working on all of these things simultaneously. So we're ready, because at a moment's notice, forget the state. We could have, we could have an infection situation in our school where we might, just Beecher Road School, might have to go to distance learning on the, on the dime. We may have to make that change at some point because the infection rate or a situation in our school compels us to do that. So we're creating all of these plans. So we're ready for any scenario because it can move between one or the other at any time given factors.
And, and I do think that the subgroups of the reopening committee have begun that work and are moving forward in, in those areas.
Is the reopening committee, is that open to the public? Can?
It's not a public meeting. It's not a, it's not a public meeting. I mean, just because, then we would, I mean, it would slow down the work of the, it's, it's a, it's a working group, kind of a meeting group. So it works either as a whole or in subgroups. And so it has not been set up in that particular manner.
And are board members able to join in?
We have a board member representative. Lynn is the board member representative.
But other board members, if they, if they wish to join?
The reality is, Bob, I'll answer for you. The reality is the board can say that they want other members, right? I mean, that's the reality of it. So if you're saying that you want to be there, Joyce, then just say that, you know? Because that's the reality. You're the board. Bob reports to you.
I know we try to, we try to have a balance at those meetings, but usually we say two board members is appropriate to balance out. So we're not overwhelming meetings like that. I would certainly be in support of one other board member joining Lynn in that meeting if others agreed. And perhaps Joyce.
Well, can I just say that? Well, the other point that I just want to make is I think that there are quite a few members of the board, as well as quite a few members of the populace of Woodbridge, who would be, who would feel more heard if it was said that opportunities are being looked for to maximize the opportunity to do outdoor learning rather than setting up a balance, which it's not clear what that balance is against. That seems like the balance, you know, we have no way to interpret that. But interpreting the understanding that within all the constraints that we have, which are enormous right now, that opportunities to maximize outdoor learning are, are being taken up, that would make people feel far more assured. And I'm not asking you to say that right now, Bob, necessarily. But I think if you can in a future meeting perhaps say that the effort has been done to maximize the opportunities for that, that would reassure quite a few members of the board and those of the public who have commented that it's very important to have that component to the learning we have going on here next year. Along with, of course, the very important distance learning model that I think is ultimately going to be called on to do a lot of education this year.
I agree with you, Jeff. And I also want to just to sminge with the whole concept of the subcommittee for the outdoor learning. And I totally understand, Bob, there's so many moving parts there. There's a lot going on. You don't want 50,000 different subcommittees. I totally get that. I feel like though, the way conversations are going, that maybe this piece, if you don't feel like one is needed for the distance learning piece, then maybe this is the exact piece that, that could use that. That subcommittee would be perfect for this. Because there are so many layers that you guys need to be working through in that work group that you already have. Having a separate group of folks focused just on this, they're not making decisions for you. They're just coming up with ideas. And they can come up with some thoughts and ideas and different options. So I just want to give a little pushback into maybe reconsidering having a subcommittee that includes some community members and whatnot that are very interested in this and have amazing ideas.
I would support that.
Okay, so we have two suggestions that I think are on the table. The first is an additional board member on the reopening committee. Is there someone who wants to make that motion?
Sure, I move, we have a second board member on the reopening committee.
Jeff Townsend?
Second up.
Who did that? David Ross, was that you?
David was the first. I was the second.
Oh, David and Jeff. So Marcia, David made the motion and Jeff Townsend seconded it. Is there any discussion about that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to add, the leader of our school, the superintendent, is kind of giving us some answers here, saying, you know, there's too many cooks in the kitchen. We don't have enough time. I think we need to start listening to the leader of our school and support how we do safe reopening with a distant learning component. I think that should be the main goal. I think point blank, Bob Gilbert told us, you know, we have to be careful going in too many different directions, the subcommittees, and we're, we're starting to run out of time. I think we need to listen to him and just, that's just my opinion on that.
Any other discussion? All right, so the motion is to add a board member to the reopening committee. Dan, do you vote in favor of that? David? Joyce? Jeff Townsend? Megan?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff Hughes?
Yes.
All right, so that's, and I vote yes. So that's unanimous. All right. So should we start with that and then see how that progresses? Does that feel good to everybody? Okay, so that's how we'll move forward. All right, is there anything else on the reopening? All right, we're going to move on to item two.
Lynn, is there a determination which board member is going to serve on that?
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Marcia. Joyce, you had expressed interest. Is there any other board member who wishes to serve on that reopening committee? I don't see anyone whose hand is raised. If your hand is raised, and I don't see that, please shout out. Joyce Shavers will be our representative to join that committee.
Thank you, Joyce, for doing that.
All right, now we're moving on to 2.2, election of chair. Are there any nominations?
Can, Lynn, can I make a comment before we vote regarding the vote?
Certainly.
I just wanted to make a proposal to the board that before we vote, we think a little bit about the structure of leadership for the board. Specifically, I'm proposing that we commit to having a, a, a leader from the respective parties in the chair and vice chair positions. So that's one part of the proposal. And the other is that it be a genuinely shared leadership position in that the leaders, the chair and the vice chair are expected to attend all meetings together. I think that this, in general, I think that we're not a board that has overly politicized issues. But I think we're in a, a time right now that is highly politically charged. And I think that we should put some structures in place that guard against the board becoming overly political. And that's what I would, I would just suggest these two things as a way of us guarding against that.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other comments before I ask for nominations?
I agree with what Jessica was trying to say.
Can you just elaborate on attend all meetings together, like all subcommittee meetings? Like what's the intent?
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, I don't mean, I don't mean subcommittee meetings. I mean meetings with superintendent, meetings with the town, all of those types of meetings that would require representation from our, our board. that would require representation from our, our board. So anytime a representative from our board is attending a meeting with someone as a spokesperson for the board, that two members, chair and the vice chair, would do that together. Not, not, not subcommittees, though.
And just to follow up what Mike was saying, is if one cannot attend a meeting where the other can, then they're, they're checking in afterwards and communicating with each other to make sure they're on the same page.
So I think that can be done certainly internally. When there's an external invitation, I think we're limited, we can ask, but we're limited to the invitation.
Yeah, yeah, I would just encourage us-
And guest, it's hard to bring a guest.
Right, but I, I just would, I just, I just would encourage us that if, if, if only one person is invited, that we return to that person and ask them to respect our decision as a board to run our board in this way as jointly.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, David, did you have a comment?
I was just saying, I agree with Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say I agree with Mike as well, too, and something we should move to normalize over the next few years in written rule policies move forward so that we can actually unify this for a future board to use as well.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think we can have time there. I think we can formalize it, but I, I'm just, all I'm asking right now is that we more informally commit to that.
Okay.
So I make a motion then to nominate Lynn Piazek as the board chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for chair? I'll ask again, are there any other nominations for chair? Robert's Rules of Water says you're supposed to ask three times, but I don't see anybody jumping up. So I'll move that we close the nominations for chair. Marcia, is it necessary to have a roll call for that?
Yes, I have to have each individual vote, please.
Okay, so if you call the roll, and do you want me to call?
It doesn't matter if it's you or me, whichever you prefer.
Go right ahead.
Okay, Lynn Piazek?
Oh, I guess I'm voting for Lynn Piazek.
Okay. Dan Cowan?
I vote for Lynn Piazek.
Jeff Hughes?
Lynn Piazek.
Mike Strampler?
Lynn Piazek.
David Ross?
Lynn Piazek.
Jeff Townsend?
Lynn Piazek.
And Megan?
Yes, I support Lynn.
Okay, that's a unanimous vote.
Well, thank you.
Joyce Shavers, I'm so sorry, I thought Joyce-
I think we have missed Joyce.
Absolutely, Lynn.
Well, I thank you all for the, your vote of confidence, I thi, I think, and we'll move forward. So that there's, under these circumstances, it leaves the vice chair position open, and so I am going to-
I was going to say that I'd love to make a motion for that.
Thank you.
I relate to nominate Joyce Shavers to serve as our vice chair of the Woodbridge Board of Education.
I will second the nomination for Joyce as vice chair. Dan Cowan.
Okay, are there any other nominations for vice chair? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? I don't see anyone jumping up. Move that we close the nominations for vice chair. Marcia, you could call the roll.
Okay, Lynn Piazek?
I'll vote for Joyce Shavers.
Dan Cowan?
I vote for Joyce Shavers as vice chair.
Okay, Megan?
Great, yes, Joyce for vice chair.
Jeff Hughes?
Yes, for Joyce.
David Ross?
Joyce Shavers.
Jeff Townsend?
Joyce Shavers.
And Joyce?
Yes, I'll vote for myself. It's a very undramatic vote. A very boring word.
And Mike Strampler?
I vote for Joyce Shavers.
So it appears to be a unanimous vote for you, Ms. Joyce Shavers. Congratulations to you. And we will start our coalition of working together. So I look forward to doing that. I do have to say that over the past two and a half, three weeks, it's a tremendous amount of work. And I'm going to start taking track of the hours because then I'm going to ask for a pay raise. Zero dollars an hour times however many hours it is.
I was gonna say, I would be happy to give you 100% pay raise.
I was gonna say the same thing. The math works out.
Dan, thanks so much. Okay, we're going to move on to 2.3, correspondence. Other than the correspondence that I noted in public comment, Megan, is there any other correspondence?
Yes, hold on. No, it's over the place here. Yes, two of the correspondence we received were public comments, so those were posted for public comments, so I won't go into those again. About the distance learning concerns and whatnot. We received a letter from the WEA asking to, sorry, their attorney, asking to keep the details of fall reopening, you know, maybe two weeks back. So I'm not sure if we've moved on that. We received that.
I'm sorry, Megan, I think I missed that. In and out, can you-
Just hang on a minute. Dan, can you tell who's giving us some background noise so we-
Can't find it. Looking really hard.
So I'm going to remind people again to please make sure that your computer or phone are muted. Otherwise, it makes it very difficult for board members to hear other board members speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Megan.
Seems better now. Were you able to hear what I said before?
Sorry.
Oh, you're on mute now.
Just keep going, Megan.
Okay. And then we received two letters, although one was from out of state, but, so I'm not sure if I'm supposed to be referencing that or not, but it was identical to one that was in state, in town, sent to us. Essentially, that was encouraging for teachers to consider, I guess their wording is divesting from the police and putting that money into other resources to support black individuals that need help. Let's see, another that we received was parents who think the lack of distance funding suggests that we review Cheshire's plan. This was a few weeks ago. This was more than, you know, at all, and was just concerned that the survey was limited. And as I said, everything else is already in public comment.
Thank you, Megan.
I'm sorry, Megan, I missed the WEA letter. There was a letter you said from the WEA?
It was early in the month, I believe we all received it. It was from attorney, not the WEA, from their attorney, asking to enact opening the details for fall reopening.
It was, I believe it was from the CEA representative, and I think we all got copied on that.
I think we did. I can double check just to make sure you received that.
Okay, if we didn't, we'll make, we'll make sure that all board members get to see
We can't hear you, Lynn.
Okay, so did you miss where I said if you didn't, if you didn't receive the letter, we'll make sure everybody gets it? Okay, that's good. Now we're moving on to agenda item three, consent agenda. Is there anything, anyone wants extracted from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion then about the consent agenda? Motion to approve consent agenda, someone?
Sure, I'll make a motion to-
Make the move to accept the consent agenda presented. Do I have a second? Mike Strampler seconded that motion. If there's anyone who opposes that motion, do raise your hand, speak up. Seeing none, unanimous vote to approve the consent agenda as approved. Moving on to item number four, reports. Update on the search for the interim superintendent. That's me. I had one, but I don't really know what I did with that. I'm sorry, people.
Well, while you're looking, I do just want to mention there are still few folks that are not muted. You can mute yourselves, like there's a lot of-
Okay, the proceed to list of qualified interns for the Association of Public School Superintendents.
Actually, Mike-
We sent an interest inquiry to all of those individuals. The board has reviewed the resumes of those expressing interest in the position, and we will begin the screening and interviewing process this week. So that's the report coming, the search for interim superintendent. Is there a PTO update? I don't know if Joyce is on and has- Joy, are you on?
I am.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, okay. While it's been a challenge to get together for obvious reasons, we were able to get a few things accomplished. We're happy to announce that we were finally able to deliver all of the sixth grade yearbooks to the students Friday and Saturday. We've also been trying to set a time to meet as a board to go over the financial report from last year and to talk about the upcoming year. We know it's going to be a very different way of doing things, and we need to see what happens with the school year, but we're really looking forward to finding creative ways to support our students, teachers, and staff. Also some good news, because of our successful fundraising efforts last year, we're happy to announce that we've approved about $9,000 in teachers' grants for the upcoming school year. Several of these grants are going to provide for flexible seating, outdoor seating, and seating which will support classrooms with social distancing. We're also going to be purchasing more inclusive and diverse book titles for our school. And we hope that we'll be meeting as a board within the next week or so. We have so much to, to talk about, and I'm sure that we'll have so much more to report on at the next meeting. So people can stay tuned for more info as it comes on brs.ptboard.com and on our Beecher Road School PTO Facebook page.
Thanks, Joy, for all the amazing work the PTO does. Appreciate your report. Staying on until almost 10 o'clock to give it. Appreciate that as well. Bob, superintendent report.
For, thank you, Lynn, and congratulations, Lynn, and congratulations, Joyce, on your new, your new jobs. I'll just brief you brief tonight, just a hiring update. We have hired two special education resource teachers in the last month. That is Robin Quirker, our permanent position, and Livia Olson to the one-year position that we have. Congratulations to both Rob and Livia, who worked in our school this year and will be back assisting us. I'd also like to announce that we have hired two classroom teachers, Nina Triplet for fourth grade and Jeanette Brito for grade six. Both Nina and Jeanette are former interns at Beecher Road School, and so we're happy to have them join us for the new year coming up. We'll also be hiring for teacher assistant in the coming weeks. We also have final interviews scheduled for our halftime speech and halftime psychologist positions, and we are definitely in need of continuing the process of hiring for our full-time music and our part-time .7 art position as we get ready to get fully staffed for the year coming up. I'd also like to mention that we had our first meeting of the Board of Ed Ad Hoc Security Personnel SRO Committee. It was a week or so ago. Our next meeting is on Monday, July 27th, a week from today, at 4:45. And I thank all those who have joined in on that committee to move forward with the committee charge. I think that really summarizes the items, other items I have already reported earlier in the reopening committee information. So that is it for my update, and I think that Lisa Sherman has a few updates to kind of tag along with.
Thank you.
Great.
Good evening, everybody. Lynn and Joyce, congratulations. Really, really pleased for both of you. I just have a few quick updates to share with everybody. The first is that our extended school year program and our summer scholars program is running virtually, but it is running, and our teachers are doing an amazing job interacting with students and supporting their learning during the summer months. A lot of talk around the table, around the state, around our school, about social emotional learning for the students, but we're also trying to take care of our staff a little bit over the summer before we even return to school. So many thanks to one of the parent representatives on our committee, Emily Bannock, who suggested a Wellness Wednesday that she was working on in her district, which we decided to try out here at Beechers. So our very first Wellness Wednesday is going to be this upcoming Wednesday, and we're pretty excited to do a few fun things with our teachers and have a little bit of fun together virtually, but still fun. I'm also, I also decided that it would be important that we reach out to the students as a school community, so they will be receiving a letter from me with a fun poem from Mr. Rogers and a little kindness challenge for them to work on throughout the summer, and that should be coming to mailboxes first because we decided kids would enjoy getting a mail, an actual letter addressed to them, because how often does that actually happen? So they will be getting that in their mailboxes really, really soon, so stay tuned to that. We are also, I think that Bob started to mention this, but we are attending as an administrative team a lot of different workshops and webinars and really trying to use this opportunity over the summer to continue some of our own learning. Some examples Bob mentioned, I think, already, the Acceleration Workshop, which is coming up, that some of us will be attending. There is a distance learning workshop coming up that Ms. Merrill is planning on attending. Ms. Merrill, Ms. Mammon, and I all attended some workshops related to legal issues, including Title IX updates, and we've also been very actively involved in all the State Department of Education webinars and offerings that they have provided. So that has been really a tremendous resource to all of us. One last thing, I know that parents are often anxious to hear who their child's teacher will be for the upcoming year, given all of our work and all the uncertainty of what the year ahead will look like. That placement letter will most likely come out just a little bit later than parents are used to, probably the second to third week of August, mid-August at some point. So just a heads up that you will get it, it just might be a little bit later, given everything going on. And that is it for me right now. And that is it for me right now.
Thank you, Lisa, for all that you're doing and your idea for Wednesday, even though it was stolen, is great. So, I think that's great for the staff as well. 4.4, upcoming meeting presentations. Our next meeting will have, our next regularly scheduled meeting, not the meeting that we're probably going to have to have in the second week of August or before. The annual wellness plan is on the agenda. Is there anything that the board has a request to be included in the annual wellness plan presentation?
Lynn, who gives the presentation?
I believe Al Pullo has given that in the past. Is that correct, Bob?
And Lisa, so it'll be a combination of Al and Lisa who will deliver that report.
Part of it is the, I believe, is the Tools for Schools report. Go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
No, yes, you are correct, Tools for Schools and some various components. I think, I think our report this year will probably certainly reflect getting ready for the fall as well. As much as it is looking back, it's looking forward as well in terms of how we're looking at wellness from a contextual standpoint of where we are right now in COVID-19. So, we need to kind of look at that and make meaning out of that. But it would be Lisa and Al who will be on the front end of that report.
Any other comments, questions, things that you would like included in that report? Okay.
I think just wanting to be mindful of admin's time and making sure that it's useful information for us and for them to be pulling together and reviewing for opening schools. Because if it doesn't feel like it's pertinent for right now, but it sounds like it is. So, but just wanting to be mindful of the time that has.
It's a great question. That's a great question. I mean, you know, just trying to be mindful of everything. They must be up to their eyeballs with all that's going on with reopening. So, it's a question for you guys.
Al and Lisa, keep that in mind.
I appreciate those comments, both of those comments, Megan and Joyce. And I do think that it's, again, it's a compliance thing. We're obligated to do that on a yearly basis, but we've already put it off a couple of months. And in all honesty, I guess we'd probably survive if we made it in September versus August, too. So, I, so I think what, I will take those comments and those kind thoughts about, just with the flexibility as we move towards that August 3rd Monday. Well, we'll be aiming for that, but we understand that you're understanding of us. Thank you.
In fact, that should apply to anything that is on your plate, right, for the admin team. So, really, the focus is on reopening, and to the extent that other work can be delayed a little bit, postponed, you might want to think about that.
I would agree that reopening is our priority right now. You know, I don't think anyone is in disagreement of that on the board. See some heads shaking, so. So, Bob, Lisa, Al, Doreen, Cheryl, keep that in mind. 4.5, finance committee. Joyce, do you want to comment on the finance committee? We do have an action item that Al might want to add a few comments to as well. But you want to start and give the finance committee report, finance committee.
Sure, I can do it quickly. So, this year's operating budget surplus came in at about, we're expecting it to be about $105,000. That's about $10,000 up from last month. And that, that amount will be returned to the town. You probably recall that at the last meeting, we talked about setting aside about $90,000 of the surplus to apply to next year's budget, and a lot of it is COVID-related and pre-purchases. The other, one other thing that I probably should mention is that we're expecting that the school lunch program is going to result in about a $25,000 loss, and it's the BOE's responsibility. So, we're going to require a subsidy from the Board of Ed. And I guess with the line items, the line item transfers, is that Al, for Al to take us through?
Yes.
And move the motion, okay.
Yeah.
We'll leave it there then.
Al, do you want to report, and then we'll have motion?
Sure, thanks, Lynn. Thank you, Joyce. You have before you in your packet this evening the annual line item transfers. It's the line by line, the heavy furniture lifting, as I refer to it, putting of accounts in order. So, during the year, we keep our eye on the $15.2 million total budget and project expected surplus or deficits. And tonight's exercise is the formality required to get the books in order, if you will, of taking care of the line items and offsetting deficits with other area account surpluses. So, the schedule nicely as it should ties out to a net zero. But just to quantify, in total, the amount of money is moving to and from other accounts represents about a 3%, a little less than 3% of the board's total budget. So, you know, things are, things are in good order. This is an exercise that Woodbridge many years ago has elected to do annually as opposed to continuously throughout the year. And it very much still achieves the intended purpose of balancing the budget at the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Al, and thank you for all the work you do, getting that all together at the end of the year.
Thanks, Lynn. I can make a motion, Lynn, if you need me.
Thank you. I need a motion for line item transfers.
I motion that we accept the line item transfers as proposed by Mr. Pullo.
Do you have a second, Joyce Shavers? Anyone opposed to that motion? Marcia, it appears to be unanimous. So, the line item transfers will... And passed on.
Thanks, Al.
Cave Liaison Report, Megan?
Yeah, so, there's a few things from Cave. I think actually Joyce referenced one was an email that they sent earlier today. All board members should have received it. If you haven't, please let me know. I will be happy to forward it to you. But it does have some good pieces of information in there. Generally, it's what is the role of, you know, Connecticut School Board of Education in the COVID-19 crisis? And as districts plan reopening for their schools. So, it kind of helps reframe where we come from on this and give us some ideas. It's kind of broad brush jokes to some extent, but there is lots of material on Cave's website, which is also in that email. You can link to it. They have a vast array of resources, so just wanted to remind folks of that. One of those resources is a webinar that is tomorrow, and it's 11:00 a.m. Folks should have received the invitation to it. But again, if you haven't, let me know. I'll forward it to you. But it's a reopening schools operation planning toolkit for board members. That looks interesting, and again, everyone should have received that so you can get more information in that email. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board about Cave? Okay, moving on to 5.1, public comment. Dan, do you see anybody?
No, I'm looking in the chat right now, and I see nobody. So, if you'd like to have a public comment, please write it in the chat. I'm giving it another minute. And no comments, Lynn.
This mute, unmute's killing me. Bob, do we have anything for executive session this evening?
No.
Wonderful.
I motion to adjourn.
Dan Cowan's made a motion to adjourn. David Ross has seconded it. Is there anyone who opposes adjournment?
I just want to, I just want to stop for a second, and I think we've said it at different points, but I do just want to take a second and thank our admin and thank our teachers and thank our parents and thank the whole community, really trying to come together and problem solve this. This is just crazy times right now. It's really unprecedented. And I think the more we can have these clever conversations, listen to each other, be open to things, figure this out. But our admin is really in the trenches right now, and I really appreciate, and our teachers. And, you know, we're trying to figure this out, so thank you all. We really appreciate you.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's a unanimous feeling of all board members. And I appreciate you, Megan, jumping in with that.
Yeah, the level, the level of engagement is amazing. And hopefully, we'll be able to maintain some of that, you know, post-COVID. But I don't even know how many people are on this call, but there were over 200 on Wednesday.
Right, right. Okay, great, so we had a motion, Dan made, David Ross seconded it. Anyone who is opposed to the motion of adjourned now? Come on, jump up and down. So, we'll adjourn at 10:12 p.m. I thank all of you for your time tonight. It was a long meeting. And I thank the administration and the teachers and the board members for participating. Have a wonderful evening.